I wanted to get started so that we can do the short program and then go and get cake because we're going to have a celebration today. So, part of the reason of coming together at Town Hall Meeting is to have an opportunity to kind of go over a few things, kind of status of where we are and where we're going this semester and the year, and then the opportunity to celebrate our reaffirmation of our accreditation, which you all, I'm sure, knew about, see, we were so ecstatic about. So I want to welcome you to our first Town Hall Meeting, and we have a few items that we wanted to share with you, and as people come in, you can catch up. We are starting off with a great year. Based on what I've seen, we're over, will probably be over 11,000 students this fall semester. I've seen numbers like 10,998, credit and non-credit. So, we got off to a full start, and yesterday I met with several organizations that want to utilize our facilities, bring high school students here in large numbers to participate. So, we're moving forward with enrollment quite nicely. What I wanted to do today was give you an overview of our mission statement, talk a little bit about Accreditation Steering Committee, our follow-up report, and then guess what? We have another self-evaluation to do, all nine colleges, yay! We're ready for you! Okay. We have another self-evaluation report due in the spring of 2016, so we are going to be busy getting ready for that. All nine Los Angeles Community College District Colleges will be participating in that. And then I wanted to quickly give you a quick overview of our governance and administrative structure. Now, you're saying, "That's a lot to do," but we'll get through it rather quickly. We just wanted to give you the highlights, inform you, see if you have any questions. And then I'm going to ask Leslie Milkie and Louise Barbato to come up and give us some last encouraging wise words. And then we'll all have cake. That's the plan. But before we get started, I want to introduce one individual in the audience that you may not have met. I've asked him to join us in the celebration in this Town Hall Meeting, and that's Dr. Matthew Lee. Matthew, do you mind standing up? Thank you, Matthew. Please give him a hand. Thank you. Matthew was our consultant for the accreditation visit last year. We brought him aboard to help us organize ourselves and prepare for the second team visit, and he was masterful in putting us all to work and focused, and it all paid off. So, I'd like to start first with the mission statement that's gone through governance and decision-making for Mission College, and I'm going to ask Danny Vianueva if you want to come up.
Good afternoon. How's everybody doing? We're going to have cake later on. Like, I'm excited about that, seeing that big cake back there. As you know, every year, through the accreditation process, we go where we look at our mission statement, match it up against how we accomplish that statement, and moving forward. The mission statement that we have before you is the one that was vetted through all the campus governance committees, went through shared governance process, was adopted by college council, and then forwarded to the board, to our Board of, I want to say Board of Governors, but our Board of Trustees, and it was adopted, and that's the mission statement that we will be focusing on for next year. As we go and make decisions, do program plan review and all that, we're going to be matching it up to that and see if we have the data to support if we're doing those things there. I won't read it to you, it's up there for you to read, and I'm sure you've all seen it. Beginning in the fall of 2015, because we go through this every year, we will be once again validating this mission statement, seeing if we're in line with what we're doing or we want to alter it. If you remember the way we're doing accreditation now, everything is data-driven, and the mission statement is not so much just something philosophical, we're going to be all things to all people, but it's something that we're going to focus on, and we have to have quantitative data to back up that we're really fulfilling our mission statement, and that's real critical. So, it's there for you guys to see, and once again, start thinking about it in your daily events. Am I fulfilling this mission? What am I doing to contribute to this mission? Or what else should we be looking at to do it? Remember, this is an inclusive process, so it's going to go back to your committee next year in the fall, so we can start looking to see what we need to add, take away, or how we can complement that with what's going on. Next slide, please. Accreditation Steering Committee. Our ALO is Michael Allen. Raise your hand, Michael. Show them here. Accreditation Liaison Officer. Not America Online. That's AOL, although I do want to say that. Is Steve Case in the audience? No. The co-chairs, the co-chairs for this year are going to be myself, I was so looking forward to, and didn't want to give it up, and Callie Enos, Professor Enos is going to be doing it. Madeline was doing it last year, but now she's in a new role as a dean, so Callie has stepped to the plate. So he, myself, and Michael will be heading up the accreditation report that we have to submit. We have one more follow-up in 2015, but we also have the big accreditation in 2016. That's the voting membership there, that's the roster, but once again, accreditation is not limited to those people there, it affects everybody that sets foot on this campus. Every faculty, every staff, every student, we all contribute. So while our name may not be up there at the moment, or while we may not be on a particular standard, the fact that we're, someone from our division, someone from our union is representing us there. Therefore, when they're not doing their job, you're backfilling for them, so that's the role you play. So for me, I'm really appreciative of, you know, all my direct reports, because as I'm busy doing accreditation, they're stepping up to the plate and backfilling for me. So you all are either directly or indirectly contributing to accreditation. For the 2016 cycle, the standards, on standard one, the A component, Madeline and Leslie is a mission. B, ensuring quality, ensuring academic quality and institutional effectiveness, it's going to be Sarah Masters and Dart. Institutional integrity will be Michael and Louise. Standard two, student learning programs and support services. Instructional programs will be Darlene Montes and Miriam Levy. Library and learning support services will be Darlene and Donna Ayers. Student support services will be Joe and a yet-to-be-named individual, you may be in the audience today. Standard three, human resources, Ron Gluck and Angela Anceveri. Physical resources, Wally and Zoila. Technology resources, Rod Austria, our new IT director, and Ryan Yamamara. Financial resources will be myself and Tobin. Standard four, leadership and governance will be Dr. Perez and David Garza. So even though your name's not here, we know these are just the individuals that are taking the lead, but we'll be adding classified staff and faculty and union representation to each one of those standards to help write those out. So, I'm really looking forward to it, it's a great opportunity to get to know your peers and contribute to our mission statement. Any questions? Comments? Clear as mud. You're all waiting for cake. Okay. I'll turn it back to Dr. Perez.
Thank you, Danny. Appreciate that, and if you have questions at the end, please feel free to ask. I wanted to cover the follow-up report. As you know, with reaffirmation, the commission asked that we would provide a March 2015 follow-up report, and they had to do primarily with five recommendations. So, the first one was Recommendation Two, which had to do with learning outcomes and student achievement, and that we accelerate its efforts to assess outcomes in all courses, programs, and at the institutional level, and assess how these findings have led to improve student learning. And I want to, again, thank Pat Flood and Deborah Paulson for all their hard work on this. Pat, would you, did you want to say a few words about our progress? I'm sorry, I sprung this on you, but here's the microphone.
No, I'm encouraged by the progress. This last semester, spring semester, there were 249 assessments that were done, that's on the course level. And we've been working very hard with IT over the summer to do a roll-up, develop a roll-up system, so as the course assessments are assessed, it will help us also assess our program learning outcomes. That's the area we were majorly deficient in, we didn't have enough of the program learning outcomes done. We had them done, but we hadn't assessed all of them. So that's our main impetus this semester, main thing we're stressing. You're all aware that we're having a SO, our Second Annual SO Summit, right? On October 17th, and we hope to see most of you there, and we will continue working on our assessment there. And thank you for all you've done. We really appreciate your help. We can't do it unless we all work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. And this is an institution-wide effort, because after we do all that, we need to have a conversation about what we've learned about our outcomes and how we can improve student learning. As you see at the bottom, self-reflected dialogue about continuous improvement of student learning institutional processes. So, by March of next year, we're going to submit a follow-up report. We've got to be able to say that we've completed substantially, systematically, our program institutional and course outcomes, but also we have created and established metrics on student achievement, and that we've had a dialogue about this, and this is what we think we need to do to improve student learning and institutional processes for our students. So, this is a big one. It's going to take a lot of work, and it can't just happen with Pat Flood and Deborah and the few of us. It's, all of us have to get involved in this. So there will be, the summit, the 17th, is really critical, where we can start that, make sure that process is complete. The next recommendation is the team recommended that we adopt mechanism for student learning, assessing student learning styles and needs. And one of the things we did is create the Eagles Nest. So I'm going to ask Michael Allen, Vice President Allen, if you want to give a quick little sort of synopsis of where we are with Eagles Nest.
Well, the Eagles Nest was actually created as the Mission College's Center for Teaching and Learning, and so it is really a place for faculty members to focus on the art of teaching and learning. We are in the process of working with the Senate to get a person who will coordinate the activities that come out of the Eagles Nest. Many of you know that we had gone through this process before, but there was a little technical difficulty that we had, so the position was reopened, it will close soon, and I will also meet with the Senate soon to determine who will be leading the efforts of the faculty, excuse me, the Eagles Nest. We need input from you as well, from the faculty members, in terms of what is it that you want to see that you think will help you improve your teaching and improve student success. So keep your eye out for some announcements in terms of different professional development activities, and once we've got that coordinator, please feel free to provide your input. You know, there's a new law that the governor just signed, that professional development is going to be required not only for faculty, but also for staff members, and we're hoping that in our efforts at the Eagles Nest, we will be able to assist the rest of the staff members on campus, have a model for professional development, and hopefully collaborate in some of our efforts.
Thank you, Michael. I'm glad you brought up about professional development, this is really what it's about. So faculty will look at pedagogy, faculty will look at instructional delivery and how to ensure that our students succeed. One of the areas I announced in my State of the College was I'd like to focus on customer service, student-centered services. So, I'll be working with student services primarily on maybe getting some training done around that area. The next, oops, is Recommendation Seven. The bottom there, the second bullet, has to do, we met the eligibility requirements, which was part of that recommendation. But Recommendation Seven has to do with overall assessment of student support services, to ensure that we're meeting all federal state requirements and we're meeting the needs of students, and to deliver, have staffing to deliver an acceptable level of services based on budgeted student enrollment. So, one of the big areas was we needed to hire and get more student services staff. So I'm going to ask Joe Ramirez, Vice President Ramirez, if he would give us an update.
Thank you. We looked at Recommendation Seven, and before it was even recommended, we knew that we had to do some analysis of student services, and we knew that what we would find is that we were short-staffed in all areas. And we have put a plan together, two-year plan together, which we implemented this year, actually, starting in the spring of '14, to hire staff that would be closer to what's really needed in student services. We worked, along with doing the analysis of student services, we also had assistance from CSUN. Some staff came over, did some focus groups, and saw that we were really understaffed to do the amount of work that we have to do. And I think that it's compiled, the work that needs to get done, is compiled by the Student Services Support Program, the 3SP. In counseling alone, we know that every student, every new student has to have either an abbreviated student ed plan or a comprehensive. So there's a number of things that have to get done, and we need staff. So we have hired, or in the process of hiring, a few people. Those, you may know that we just closed on September 12th, the position of Dean of Student Success, which is going to lead our 3SP program as we move through '14, '15, '15, '16, '16, '17, and on and on, that is going to become a part of our daily culture. And I have to say again, that if you don't know what 3SP is, we're going to try to inform and educate the campus on this, because it's going to change the face of how we do business. Because they're talking, the state is always talking about success levels, achievement levels, and we have to meet them, and some of it's tied to funding. So we will be hiring, we've got a committee, we hope to have that person board-approved and ready to start it by November. So that position is ready. We will be hiring a student services aide in the Assessment Center. I understand that the list has been given, Michael, and Ron should be given that, and that could be interviewed within the next couple of weeks, and that person should be able to be hired and brought on campus, hopefully by the mid to late October. We do know, if you don't know, we have, we did hire a student recruitment coordinator that began on July 14th, and this is a very crucial position, that if we've seen this year alone, we've had an increase, around 7% of our enrollment has increased. And we had put in our strategic plan, our master strategic plan, that we would be at 15,000 students by 2015. And of course, a number of things prevented that from happening, but we are in course to do that. So, I would imagine with the next two to three years, and the efforts that we put out there with recruitment, we could reach 15,000 students, so we have that. We hired an A&amp;R evaluation technician, and she's sitting right there. Roji was brought on, and I think he started July 28th, right around the end of July. And the other positions that we have are in counseling. We do have limited-term counselors that we'll be hiring, but we have hired several adjunct counselors to support the counseling department and its efforts to meet the needs of students with SAPs. That's a huge task. So those are our hires. We have a second-year plan that will begin '15, '16, but we'll get to those next year. That's Recommendation Seven. So when we write that, we'll be able to say to the accreditation team, yes, we've met that recommendation. Recommendation Nine had to do with comprehensive program review in student services. And student services, there are two people here that drove the bus for comprehensive program review in student services. All of our departments, all of our departments went through comprehensive program review starting in May, we worked through it, it was done, validations at the end of August. And there's two people that really drove that bus. One's already been introduced, Dr. Matthew Lee, we appreciate all the support she had, and the other is Monica Moreno, I don't know if Monica's here. She's right there. She really pushed us, along with Dr. Lee, to make sure that we were meeting our deadlines, and we did. So every department went through program review, so we can, and we're just going to be going through our assessments in the fall, and, you know, to use those as improvements for what we need to get done in student services. So, we're on track, we'll be able to write our follow-up reports and say, "Done, and done, and ya know." We're not going to put, we're not going to have either one of these recommendations come up in '16. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. And again, I want to thank Matthew Lee and Monica Moreno for all their hard work on that. Fifteen units had comprehensive program reviews, and they established a validation system, validated them. But the work is not done, because now that they have all of their comprehensive program reviews, they have their service area outcomes, they have to assess themselves this fall and implement the things they said they were going to do, whether it be admissions and records, or counseling, financial aid. And then they have to assess the implementation, and so by the fall or the spring report, they got to say, "We've assessed it, this is what we did, and this is what we learned." So, it's quite a task. Recommendation 14, I'm going to skip a little bit, but it had to do with making sure that we had collegial governance in place, and we had an administrative structure that was sufficient for the size of the institution. The main concern there in the action letter was administrative structure, and it had to do much with student services, some of the hiring that we're doing there. But I'm going to save that to the very end, and I want to move forward now to the self-evaluation for 2016, and I'm going to ask Vice President Allen and Michael if you'll talk about the self-evaluation.
All right, well, VP Vianueva did a pretty good job of talking about what was going to happen for the 2016 accreditation cycle. Couple of things that he did not mention, that the 2016 cycle will be based on revised standards that came out of the ACCJC. Our last self-evaluation was on the old standards, the new standards have been adopted by the commission. They're a little bit more concise than the old standards, really evaluating us mostly on the same stuff, but just organized a little bit differently. For those of you who have trouble sleeping at night, feel free to visit the ACCJC website and read those new standards. Let's see, in terms of timeline, we expect the self-evaluation report to be done by the end of spring 2015. Now, we've got our last self-evaluation, we have our first follow-up report that came after that self-evaluation, and then we've got the 2015 follow-up report to the follow-up report. So, basically, we've got a lot of the information and a lot of the evidence already to have a real good running start with the 2016 self-evaluation. We will take the summer to go ahead and review and edit the text, and make sure that we've got all of the evidence that we need to support what we say in our self-evaluation. And then in September of 2015, we'll do our final additions and our final edits, so that we can use the months of October through December to get the entire self-evaluation vetted through the different constituencies here on campus, and then get final approval so that we can send it off to the ACCJC. Doesn't mean that we're done, that means that we still must continue to do what we said we were going to do in terms of next steps in our self-evaluation, and then we will most likely prepare a bulleted-type list to show the visiting team how we have continued, that this is a continuous process, and that we are continuing to improve as we go along. So, it's great to read the self-evaluation and see how far we came from the self-evaluation to the follow-up report, and then for us to look at where we were at the follow-up report and what we'll be able to present in the spring of 2015. And I congratulate every single person in this room and on this campus, because we've all worked hard as a team, and we've got that special spirit at Mission College, and we're going to be great, we're going to do great things. So thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Give ourselves a hand. We'll give you a hand too, Michael, thanks for your hard work. You know, again, Victor and everybody, thank you for the SS mission, it's a beautiful, we should all get on it soon. I don't know if you all had a chance to see the Flex Day, but that was so much fun. Just quickly, I'm going to end with this, this has to do with Recommendation 14. This is our current, what we call, shared governance committee structure. We may have to do a few changes here and there because of some title changes, but we did add two new committees, the Learning Outcomes Assessment Committee and the Program Review Oversight Committee, and you'll see those down there. But I wanted you to be aware of this, because what I want to do is finally finalize it in terms of making sure we make all the changes, if there are any, and get it out to the entire campus. Because Recommendation 14 is saying that every single person on this campus has to understand our governance system. So this is one of the homework assignments, and if you can't sleep at night, like Michael says, you can look at that chart. The other is, every single person on campus needs to know our administrative structure. So again, we're going to tweak it, make sure the appropriate names, we're hiring new people, some people have moved to other spots. But this is my org chart. I look lean and mean in that org chart. Darlene Montes is no longer with me, she's took an interim position with the Vice President of Academic Affairs, so that position right now is vacant. This is the Vice President of Administrative Services, Danny Vianueva, and his key folks, as you know, the Sheriff's Department reports to him, so he is in constant communication with Sheriff, Director of College Facilities, he has his administrative analyst, Ron Gluck, College Financial Administrator, Jerry, the manager of the college information is our new guy, Rod Austria. Rod, do you want to stand up? This is our new IT director. Thank you, Rod. And finally, Francis Nguyen, our financial, Nguyen, our financial analyst. And then we have the Vice President of Academic Affairs, Michael Allen, this is his crew, he's got those folks, but I did want to show he's staffed up much better than when he first got here, two years ago. But he now has a Dean of Academic Affairs. Let's give Madeline Hernandez a hand for being selected. The other Dean of Academic Affairs on an interim basis is Darlene Montes, and she's back. Where are you, Darlene? There she is. You look lovely today, by the way. Then the Associate Dean of Academic Affairs, Kathy Brinkman. Kathy? There you are. See, they all sit together over there. And the Dean of Institutional Effectiveness, Sarah Masters, she's sitting with them too. So, and then everyone else, which you can read, I just wanted to lay that out. And then now Joe has the Dean of Student Services, Ludi Vegas. I don't know if Ludi's here. Oh, there you are. Give her a hand. And then of course, he has all those programs, the athletic program, Child Development Center, but the new Dean of Student Success and the Student Recruitment Coordinator are new positions that we're going to be hiring, a Dean of Student Success. There's probably going to be some reconfiguration that the Vice President of Student Services and his staff will look at in terms of how to reconfigure so we maximize the Student Success Support Program, Triple SP. So, that wraps it up, and I would like to ask if Leslie Milkie and Louise Barbato had any last wise words for us before we cut the cake.
Okay, I don't have anything, I don't want to get in the way of your cake. And I just wanted to mention just very quickly... And I just wanted to mention just very quickly, one of the things I'm most excited about is that there's a lot more participation I'm noticing. If you look at this steering committee, there's a lot of new faces this year, and a lot of people have stepped up and, or sort of coming to help in some of the challenges that we've got coming up for this year. So I am very, from the Senate side, I'm very appreciative to the faculty that are up and running. It's, it's the fourth week of school, and I don't know if, I mean, this is supposed to be motivating, but I'm exhausted. And I think you are too. I mean, we're just, we're not even into the fourth week of, I probably shouldn't be talking right now, but, yeah. So we've got a lot going, and we've got a lot on our plate, and I really appreciate those of you that are coming to help with some of these projects, it makes a difference. Because, you know, you're probably confused with the follow-up report and the follow-up to the follow-up, and then you've got the, I mean, there's so many things going on, and Michael is right, we have this special spirit at Mission College. We, we tend to really, you know, tackle these initiatives wholeheartedly, and I appreciate that. So that's all I want to say from the Senate side. I want to thank everyone for all of your hard work this whole last year, particularly for the first four weeks, and we're moving forward. So thank you.
Good morning, or good midday. I'd like to reiterate the congratulations to all of you, because none of what has been accomplished over the last two years could have happened without cooperation of everyone here, and even the people who are not here. As far as AFT is concerned, we, faculty and staff and the other units as well, have a lot to be proud of, because we took a very active role in the past two years in making sure that we reestablish a collegial atmosphere. We verbalized some of the things, problems that were ongoing, and I honestly think that we're at a better place. Now, we can't talk about union without speaking about contract, because once again, you know, from my point of view, and I hope from your point of view too, that contract, that set of rules holds us all together, in the sense that it gives us the guidelines by which we operate every day. And I really would like to thank the spirit of the college, all of you here, faculty, staff, our administrators, for making it so that the contract is a priority, that we do, are, we're actively following our contract deadlines and the concepts behind the various articles that we have. This is, you know, preliminary, because as any civilization has rules that allows things to function, that's what the contract does for us, and at all levels, from administrators to chairs, I think we have, I've got to say this, we have an exceptional group of chairs who are very eager in making sure that things are done correctly. And we also have a sort of mentality overall, that if there is a problem, we look at it, we figure it out, and we decide how to go forth. So again, I'm very proud of Mission, this piece of history that we have here, because it's one of cooperation, collaboration, which most of you never see. A lot of that happens on a daily basis, those quick emails that fly back and forth, there's a problem here, what do we do about it? And we move forward. So a lot of that sort of happens in the background again, and you're not aware of it, but that's what keeps this big machine running. So one last note, the whole, all of these efforts to increase enrollment, I think, was it 7.2% or were we higher?
I think we only hit eight.
Whoa, 8%. That's phenomenal. When I speak about this around the table at the union, at the district, you know, eyes are popping out of sockets. Mission, Mission, they've done that? Have they done, well, surely? And then they try to find all these things that we're doing wrong? I say, no, 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 no. We're smart in the way that we're adding classes, we're smart in the way that we're maintaining our enrollment. And I would like to think that our concept of student success is what drives that increase in enrollment. So again, you know, I have a little bit of goosebumps, a little bit of tiredness too, because, you know, this is one hell of a job, and Leslie can say the same, and our administrators and such. It's, it's a constant job of so many details and, and monitoring, and I think we have come a long way, and we have all of you to thank for that, and we have an awful lot to be proud of. So congratulations.
Well, okay, I was waiting for the comedian to come up, but, so we're ready to have cake. I want to thank Luis Barbato and Leslie Milkie for those strong and encouraging words, and, you know, we'll, we'll pump you up with some more coffee or something, we'll figure out something there. So are there any questions or comments? All right, I'm not going to stop you from the cake, let's have some cake and celebrate our reaffirmation, and please congratulate Matthew Lee in particular, he is looking forward to this celebration. Thank you.